Good evening, everyone. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Mr. Sfoboda is excused. Mr. Leon is on his way. First item on the agenda is a moment of silence. Please join us as we remember Miriam Penny Bosberg, a retired employee of the school district; Nicholas V. D'Onofrio, a 1966 graduate; Kathy M. Rogala, a 1971 graduate; Gerald Schop, a graduate of the district; and Lillian Wooding, a former employee of the district. Thank you. Item two, a community survey summary. Miss Speech.
Good evening. Tonight I'm going to present the summary results of the district community survey that we recently compiled. Summary result because what you're going to see tonight compiles all results for the entire district. We are in the process, Mrs. Cook is tabulating the individual results by school building, and those will be available to principals and building planning teams in the near future. And that will also be posted on the district website. So again, this year, similar to last year, the survey was open from January 10 through the end of February. We attempted to attract people through a variety of means. We did press releases, advertisements on school marquees, several district test and email alerts, website posting, Facebook and Twitter posting. And Mrs. Cook also talked me into doing a video newsletter that went out, e-mail and text blasts as well. We had 1,268 respondents, up slightly from last year. And out of those respondents, 1,048 people responding had at least one child enrolled in our schools. So what you can see here is the raw number of responses by school. The schools are listed there with the elementary schools first, and the junior high, high school, and Main Street is the one on the end. The three different bars indicate, the first one is the most recent, 2018. The blue bar in the middle is last year's survey responses, and 2016 is the bar over to the right. And as you can see, we had much more participation the very first year. So categories for the survey remained: climate, academics, communications, safety, homework and reporting, engagement, responsiveness, and quality and satisfaction. However, there are some slight changes to questions in the first three categories, and I will share those changes with you. 2017 questions are on the left, and 2018 are on the right. And where it says, "I feel welcome in my child's school," this year we said, "I feel welcome and respected in my child's school." You're going to see a trend here that we tried to weave in the concept of respect, and we tried to make the survey questions more closely aligned with our district goals. Number five used to say, "I believe staff inspires my child's best efforts," and now we did a two-parter. A, "I believe that staff inspires my child's best efforts," that stayed the same, but we added, "I believe that staff respects my child." And number six, "Staff is courteous and helpful," we changed that to say, "Staff encourages an inclusive environment," once again aligned with our focus areas in Vision 2020. And the last one, "A climate of openness and trust exists between administration and parents," we tweaked that to say, "A climate of openness and trust exists between parents and all staff," because we really think it's important to involve all staff. The category of academics, we did make one change, where it says, "My child is challenged to his or her full potential." We left that as part A, but we added a second part that said, "My child is being prepared to compete in a global economy," again trying to align the survey questions with our vision. Communications category changes with survey question number 13, "I am informed of events and activities." We left that as a part A and added, "I am comfortable communicating my feelings and concerns with school personnel," again trying to emphasize the focus of communication. So let's take a look at the questions in the survey. Again, we presented it this year in a pie graph, and then totaled the number of responses that were strongly agree and agreed pertaining to each question. And also, Mrs. Cook, when she put this together for us, indicated the comparisons to last year's survey. So 81% of the respondents here agree or strongly agree, "My child enjoys going to school," down slightly from last year's responses. And after each pie graph, in this presentation, you will see, again, the comparisons in terms of how people responded each of the three years, with the top line, the greenish-colored line on the top in each section there being the most recent. Obviously, the blue is last year, and the bottom line is the previous year. "I feel welcome and respected at my child's school," 85% of the respondents agree or strongly agree. However, this also was down 3% from last year. And again, you can see strongly agrees were slightly down, agrees were up just 1% there. "My child is challenged to his or her full potential," 79% of respondents agree or strongly agree, and last year it was 81%. And again, the breakdown, similar here, slightly lower with strongly agree, a tiny bit increase with agree. "My child is being prepared to compete in a global economy," we don't have a trend slide following this because we've never asked that question in that way before, and 74% agreed or strongly agree. "My child is provided with academic opportunities to support his or her interests and needs," 80% agreed or strongly agreed, that was down 2% from last year. And again, same thing here, down slightly with a strongly agree, up just a tiny bit in the agree category. Communications, question 13A, "I'm informed of events and activities." This one, I have to say, surprised us. 87% of respondents agreed or strongly agreed, but that was down 5% from 2017. And I know that this year we've done a lot of communication via electronics with the thinking that that's what people wanted to see, but we're wondering if this slight decrease may have something to do with people not adjusting to the new website. I'm not sure, and we're in the process of analyzing comments that people have made that might help. And again, you can see the decline. "I'm comfortable communicating my feelings and concerns with school personnel," 81% agree or strongly agree, and again, this was a new question this year. "My child feels safe at school," no surprise here that this has gone down 6% with 83 of respondents agreeing or strongly agreeing. We were quite proud in the past of how people responded to the safety question. Last week, we had a public information session, and unfortunately, we had a small number of attendees, but those that were here did take some time to give us some feedback on whether we feel as though people responded to this question by what's happening around the country with schools and safety in general, or if their responses were particularly pointed to things here in North Syracuse. And again, you can see the decrease in the strongly agree and the increase in agreeing with the safety statement. Same concept, safety on the bus. Again, this also was down 6% from last year with a similar pattern if you look at the comparisons from year to year. Now we're into homework and reporting. "The amount of homework given to my child is appropriate," 80% of people responding said they agree or strongly agree, again down slightly. Slight changes. "The level of difficulty associated with my child's homework is appropriate," 83% agreed or strongly agree, again down 2% from... And you can see the slight decrease as well. "I receive enough information to understand my child's academic progress," this one was concerning. Only 73% agreed or strongly agreed, it was down 8% since last year. We've spent some time talking about this. We also asked people who attended the public information session last week for some more info on this. And we think that it's twofold. We think that the changes in the elementary report card and the difficulty in rolling out the electronic report card and getting people comfortable with that may have something to do with it, as well as the change in the electronic reporting system at the high schools. So again, change is difficult, and we're thinking that we'll work on to help people understand and to feel more comfortable with it. See here the decline. "I am involved in the decisions that affect my child's education," this was exactly the same as last year with 81% agreeing or strongly... Slight decrease with a strongly agree, but made up for it with the people who checked agree. "I have appropriate opportunities for involvement in my child's education," this one was up slightly, up 1% from last year with 77% agreeing or strongly agreeing. Percentage that agreed that carried the difference. "Responsiveness, teachers are responsive to parent guardian concerns," 84% agreed or strongly agreed, a slight decrease here. And you can see the agrees stayed exactly the same with the strongly agrees going down a tiny bit. "School administration is responsive to parent guardian concerns," this was down 3% from last year, 79% agreeing or strongly agreeing, and you can see the pattern, up slightly with a strongly agree, but we lost some ground with those who felt as though they just agreed with it. "School facilities are well maintained," we did quite well here again with 90%, however, it was down 2% from last year. And this is an overall. Overall, I'm satisfied with the North Syracuse Central School District, 78% of respondents agree or strongly agree, and I think that this is a bit concerning that this is also down 4% from last year. Some people question, "Why would we ask such an overall global question?" But I think it's worth asking the overall satisfaction. This is the kind of comment that people make when they're talking to friends or relatives about moving into the district and kind of just generally, "What do you think about the school district?" And so I think that it's important to know what people are feeling about this. And again, strongly agrees were down, tiny bit of an increase with the agree. So overall, slight trend for... Little bit lower in most of the categories. My mathematical friends around me tell me it's not statistically significant. However, I feel as though the safety issues and the grading issues are the ones that we kind of really need to dive into and pay closer attention to. And we will be looking at individual school feedback and how that compares to the district overall, and working on the areas that we need to work on. Before I open up to questions, I do want to add that I believe it's next week my student council group will be coming in, and they will be taking a look at the survey questions from last year, doing some tweaking, and putting... The plan is to put the student survey back out again in May between that period of when state testing ends and prior to regent starting for all of our secondary students to have an opportunity to tell us how they feel about very similar topics. So, questions? I think some of it, I think the ones that are more statistically significant have to do with change, because we've implemented major changes in some of those areas. I do believe the safety question, you know, I think schools right now are in the limelight. It's a heightened awareness. I think that we've done a lot of things to work on safety, and we continue. I think part of the frustration is some of the things that we do aren't the kinds of things that you advertise to the public, because as soon as you do that, the people who you're trying to make sure don't intrude and get in know a little bit too much about the system. So I think that some of that is with the safety. With some of the other things, I think this is a year that we've kind of shook things up a bit. We've spent a lot of time studying different things, starting to launch some initiatives, but I think this is the year, in terms of the third year of the student survey, it's the student and community survey, it's also the year where things are being changed, and change is difficult. Yes. So we'll keep plugging away. Anything else?
Did the percent change account for the difference in respondents? So we had 200 more people respond this year. So was that percentage...
Yes, I mean, it all corresponds. So you would, you know, the percentage is based on percentage of those responding, so...
Well, just from the previous year to this year, we had more people respond this year, so...
Yes, but we didn't have as many respond as we did the first year. We had the greatest response in the first year. Questions and thoughts?
Yeah, I just, that's what concerns me, the huge response. I don't know if it was huge in context of how many went out the first year, but when I look at the significant drop-off, I don't know if it's just because it's a new thing the first time, and not a big difference between last year and this year. Way to, you know...
So would I, and every year we try to increase sort of our advertising of it as well. I was hopeful that we would get an increase in the number of participants rather than...
There were comments, right?
Yes, but we haven't sorted through all of those yet.
Probably get some good information out of those.
So we will post this on the website this week, the district website, and as soon as Mrs. Cook finishes the individual school information, we'll get that out to the board as well as post that information as well. And I was just going to say, stay tuned, because I'll be back in the summer with a student survey. However, I'm going to reword that. My students will be back this summer to present their data.
Thank you, Lynette.
Yeah, we got the 18-19 budget update with Mr. Keenan, so...
We have a lot of information to cover tonight. Much of it is redundant from things we've been talking about since our initial budget presentation, but we're trying to pull together the whole budget picture here as we head into next week's, hopefully, board adoption of the budget. So we're going to talk about all these items here, and I'll jump right into our estimated revenues. Our revenue estimate is $162,485,013. And the... These items are pretty set. Since we last met, you know, with interest rate environment improving, we bumped up our interest a little bit. We've taken a good hard look at each of these line items, and the only one that I think at this stage of the game is subject to change is state aid. We're hopeful, as the legislature and governor worked this week, to update, to finalize, I should say, the budget, that we'll be in a position to update our 18-19 forecast for state aid and hopefully see an increase. The largest component, I noted here on the bottom, the largest component of our general aid is foundation aid, and that's $45.8 million of the $62.4 million for 2018-19. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about foundation aid one more time. It's probably the single biggest financial issue that the district faces with... We're still not being paid the foundation aid that was enacted by the legislature in The amount of aid that we're supposed to be receiving is the amount that will enable us to provide a sound, basic public education for all children in our district. And it's a pretty sophisticated formula that I happen to have a lot of confidence in. We've shown you this chart before. If you look, the current school year, the 17-18 school year, the year we're in right now, we're $8.2 million underfunded. That jumps to about $10.7 million for next year. And so again, the conversations that we've been having with the legislature, they're indicating that we should be anticipating a increase in our foundation aid as they wrap up the budget, and we're hopeful that we will. I can tell you, it will not be a $10.7 million increase, but I'm hopeful over some point in the future here that they'll close that gap. And it's, again, the single biggest financial issue the district faces. It's been $155 million short since they enacted the legislation in 2007-8. Sure. No, it's okay. Sure, well, we've actually... Yeah. Yeah, so let me... The honest answer is, I don't know. But let me, a little bit of history here. When they enacted it in '07, '08, they said that it was going to take several years to roll out. And they actually did, that you can see that they made a good faith effort to bump up foundation aid, but what happened was, the economy hit the skids, and they froze foundation aid. And so we ended up in many years where this number was growing very nominally, or didn't grow at all a couple of years, yup, for three years in a row. And so what we're hearing is that the governor last year tried to make an attempt to actually change the formula, to make this difference go away. But the legislature fought that and said, "No, you know, if this is what it takes to provide a sound, basic education for our children in New York, we can't abandon that." So there's always hope. You know, how much of the gap they'll close, I don't know. What concerns me the most about financial, about foundation aid, is the inequity of it. We have some schools in New York State that receive the foundation aid that they're supposed to under the legislation enacted in 2007-8. There are some that receive more than they're supposed to, and some that receive less. We're really on the getting the short end of the stick. We receive the least, and it has to do with the fact that when the formulas were frozen, allocation of aid becomes a political process, and we've never really been able to recover from that. And again, we bring it to the attention of the legislature every year, and our legislative committee talks about it, and we just hope that we'll be able to get some support to fully fund this or fund it more substantially in the future. Again, when I think about state aid and this being the lion's share of our state aid, it's something that's a drum we keep beating until there's, you know, until there's change. Well, it's just the way the formula worked. It's just that, no, gosh, no, it's not necessarily... It's a little bit of dumb luck, very complicated formula. So for some school districts, maybe they had larger enrollment at one time, and their enrollments declined, and there's a lot of... Their wealth index may have changed, and there's a lot of different factors in the formula. And, you know, I think honestly, I don't think there's anything particularly that those districts have done, it's just the way the formula played out for them. As you can imagine, you try to put a formula together that's supposed to equitably distribute aid for 700 school districts in New York State, and everybody's at a starting point when the formula goes in. Some people are farther away than others, and so as you work through the process of trying to bring everybody together, you know, it has maybe some accidental consequences, and I think that's what we're seeing. So moving off of foundation aid, just talking about, this is the final tax cap calculation. We've scrubbed this thing and been through it numerous times. We filed it with the state comptroller's office, as I mentioned last time. We're looking at an increase of 2.94%, which is an increase of $70 on a $100,000 home before STAR. So this is a chart that you folks have seen before. I put it in this presentation. Normally, I think I save it for when the board adopts the budget, but wanted you to see. And just to remind people that these are projected school rates, and I'll talk a little bit about that more in the next slide. These are projected rates because all these rates are based on the current assessments, which will be updated and finalized this coming summer. But as you know, we're made up of three towns, Cicero, Clay, and Salina. Cicero and Salina are full value assessed towns. So a $100,000 house that's worth $100,000 is assessed for $100,000 theoretically, that's how it should work. In the town of Clay, it's a partial value assessed town. So a $100,000 house in Clay is only assessed for $4,270. Now, have no fear that we all pay the same amount of tax, $2,436, but our... The rate on the full value homes are $24.36, and the rate for Clay is about $567.95.
Don, I have a question about that.
Sure.
So for Clay, everyone who has a house valued at $100,000, that's their flat rate? That's how they...
That's their assessed value. It's a partial value assessment. Believe it or not, almost half the towns in New York State have not adopted a full value assessment tax system. So this isn't uncommon, this isn't a scam or anything, it's just the origins of assessments, and so it's a fractional assessment. But like I said, when it comes down to taxation, because of equalization rates, there's a Board of Equalization in New York State that goes around and says, "Fine, if you don't want to have a full value assessed system, we'll have an equalization rate, and we'll use that rate to make sure that $100,000 house in Clay and Cicero and Salina all pay the same amount of taxes." And it works out pretty good, you know, from what I can see. Again, we don't have anything to do with assessments, I can't attest to the assessments in the towns, but I can say that based on these formulas, the taxes are apportioned to the towns and levied to the... Or charged billed to the individual taxpayers based on a full value. That's consistent. So it's $70 per year, as I reported on the previous slide, before STAR. Now, here's a chart that we've talked about this topic a lot over the years, and I don't know that we've ever done a chart for it. We, in cabinet, I often, every year, will send a letter to the superintendent, and we kind of report to the superintendent. We projected those rates when we did the budget. How'd that all work out? And that's what this attempts to say. So I just told you, this is a projected rate, this $24.36, but let's look how it worked out the last several years. So last year, I said the rate was going to be $23.88. But as you can imagine, all the assessments, assessments change, not all the assessments, but assessments change every year. And so we told people it was going to be a $23.88 per $1,000 or a 3.02% increase, and that their actual tax rate would be $23.65. I'm sorry, but their actual tax rate ended up being $23.65, about 23 cents lower, and their actual rate increase was 2.03%. And that's pretty much like two years ago, it was actually a rate decrease. We said it was going to be 1.09%. It ended up being about 33 cents cheaper, which put it as a rate decrease. And so '13, '14 was a little closer, but the other years generally, and I wrote this on the bottom here, since school districts are not involved in the property tax assessment process, and final assessments are not available until after the school budget process is completed, the school tax rates quoted in connection with the budget are estimates. Actual rates and increases are usually lower than projected. And so I just thought I would share that. Mary, I think you might have been the board member that said, "Hey, let's put a slide in for that." So I did the best I could on that one.
Don, go back, go back to your cap.
Oh, go to the cap.
Yeah. And this is pointing out what should happen this year in theory. We've got a tax levy increase of $294.
Right.
Second line down, according to the people at the comptroller's office, the tax base is growing 1%. If that materializes, you'll be sitting here a year from now saying, "Well, we projected $294, and it turned out to be $194."
Yeah.
So that's the... The tax cap creates the... So, that's the, the tax cap creates the illusion among the taxpayers that their bills are going to go up at the cap. Well, that's true if that second line down is 1.0000.
Exactly.
But, again, the comptroller says your base grew 1%. We don't know for sure if it's going to be there. If it is, folks out there need to know that really, they're going to be looking at 2% increase in their own, not 294. Hard to get people to understand that when we've got to publicize the cap and tell them where we are.
And it, it, it is, it is a little bit confusing. I mean, we always say to people, you know, we're going to levy $87.7 million. That's going to be the amount of school tax we're going to try to collect from our local school taxpayers. And, but that's going to be spread over all the properties. And so, the extent that the properties have grown, there's more properties out there, they're going to share the load. And so, that's, that's the concept. Thanks for pointing that out, Mike.
But you have no guarantee that 1% is going to materialize in the numbers you get in August.
Exactly. So, in August, what happens is, we get, we get the final assessed values, and we redo our calculation, and that's the, the basis for the tax bills that get produced and sent out.
That's why last year, you projected three and dropped by two, there was growth in the base.
Yup.
About 1%.
I'm sorry, this, this, I tried to make this, I tried to make this a better chart. I kind of, I, I got to make the graph bigger. Trust me, there's little numbers up here somewhere, if you can see them in the audience out there. But, but the purpose of this chart, so this is the North Syracuse Central School District, and this is $23.18, which was from the '17 data, showing what, the school year '16, '17, showing our rate versus all the other towns in our BOCs. And I think we've said this before, we've shown this chart in different ways.
You said towns.
What's that? Districts, sorry. Sorry, districts, thank you, Mike. All the districts in our BOCs. And, and I think the purpose of this chart is to say, we're not the highest in terms of our rate per thousand, and we're not the lowest either. We're, we're kind of in the middle of the pack. Moving on to proposed expenditures, and I, this is our proposed expenditures. I'll talk a little bit in a minute about our deficit. But right now, we're at $163.1 million in expenditures. We've gone through, again, working with principals and directors and getting feedback, and we really appreciate it. A number of our employees have sent us emails with concerns about this, or thoughts about that. And we've read all of them, and, and we've discussed them, and we're trying to do the best we can to incorporate that. We really do appreciate people's input. And so, we've got some fine tuning still to, to do here. But last time I was with you, we reported a $1,140,000 deficit. We're down to 636 right now. Again, we're hopeful we're going to get some, that our revenues are going to come up to close that further with some additional foundation aid. And we've got some more discussions, we're still doing some fine tuning of some things as we come down the homestretch, getting ready for next Monday. Oh, sure, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, you bet.
Okay, so, look at-
Yeah.
Instructional programs.
Yeah, and, and so, I always say this, and thank you for, for asking that question.
I think John can probably explain. There's some things in there, isn't there?
Well, it, it really is, it really is, we're a people-based business. And that's, I always say this on this slide, and I failed to say it, Erin, in this, when I was presenting it just now, but we're a people-based business. The most important thing we do is put adults in front of children. So, it makes a lot of sense that the compensation and the benefits of our employees represent such a large portion of the pie, because that's, that's kind of what we do. And yes, it is, it is compensation, there's all the related benefits. So, it's not only healthcare, but it's, it's our, our FICA, and our retirement, and a whole bunch of other things that fall into there. But that is, those two pieces of the pie are the engine of North Syracuse. It's all of our, all of our people that, that support our students in their, in their education. Other things I should, I'll take a moment now to point out, our debt service, that's our mortgage payment. Every year, we got to pay, you know, all the debts that we have for, for our, our various building projects that we've done. BOCs is a huge cost for us, and we spend a lot of money on whether it be technology services, or special ed services, or, or instructional programs, and library media, and there's just a lot of, you know, a lot of pieces that go into this. And this is one of the areas we want to, we're going to, we're going to spend a little more time this week, you know, diving into this, and, because that's a line that's grown quite a bit over the last several years. Special projects, these are our security projects that we do. And I had somebody, you know, so like, for example, we're in the process right now, you, if you've been over to the junior high, you'll notice that their entryway is, is, had some modifications to it. And over the break, over the spring break, they'll be putting in a more secure, double, single point of entry that has a double entry to it. So, there'll be a security guard and locked doors between the public and getting into the buildings. So, we're working, that's that project that's going to happen. Equipment, you know, someone said to me recently, wow, you're, that's a lot of money on equipment. But if you think about the number of schools that we're servicing, and the number of buildings we have, and then, this is, I, I wish I could tell you this was really exciting equipment, but it's a lot of floor scrubbers, and desks, and furniture, and, and lawn, lawn equipment, and, and just real basic equipment that we purchase to just keep the buildings going. And, you know, and we've, we've been doing things like replacing cafeteria tables that aren't operating so well, and could potentially create a workman's comp risk or a student getting hurt. We don't want that to happen, so we want to make sure we stay on top of our equipment. But those are, those are some of our expenses.
Don?
Yeah.
Go back, just, I want to go back to Erin's point.
Oh, sure.
We've got 77% salary and benefits.
Yup.
That number at BOCs, a huge piece of that is salary and benefits of BOCs staff.
Yes.
So, if we take even 5% of that, now you're at 82% of our expenditures are salary and benefits, whether it's our folks here, BOCs folks. You said, we're a people business.
Yeah, and I-
I want to emphasize that, a lot of that number is salary and benefits.
And I should, and then, you know, Nat jumped in here, or fired me a dirty look if I say this wrong, but the reality, the reality of it is, we've done a lot of studies, and people think, oh, man, these people are overpaid. We look at our teachers versus, you know, that's most of our, our, you know, again, I'm proud to say that teachers in front of kids is the most important thing we do. And we can stand here and say that when we compare our teachers to the rest of the teachers in upstate New York, and certainly in our BOCs, that our guys are not on the top end of the scale. So, you know, we're, we're a people-based business, and we should all be proud of the fact that that's where we spend our money, and it's-
I think John just wrote that down.
He's, he's heard me say that before, I think.
Okay, okay. Hey, hey. As you said, when we, you're going to look at the BOCs some more.
Yeah, yup.
There's a lot of things in BOCs that I think we've picked up over the years, that if you were to outsource or do ourselves, would cost probably more money than outsourcing to BOCs. So, as you look at that, I think you have to, you know, as you dig into why it's grown so much, I think that's part of it.
Yes, absolutely. And we got, we got a couple of slides coming up that might give you some insights into some of our investments in, in BOCs. So, I'm going to turn it over. Are you going to do the intro, Nat, on this one?
So, now, we're going to talk about priorities in the budget. And we really fought long and hard, and really made the initiatives, our focus areas, areas related to our mission and our vision, priorities as we put this budget together. So, you're going to see some of us jump in here and talk about expanded course options for students at the high school, going along with increasing the minimum credit requirement for seniors at the high school, increased staffing at the junior high so that all students have the opportunity to take art, health, and family and consumer science, additional sections added for science at the junior high in order to keep class size real reasonable, continuing to monitor and address staffing needs related to our special education programs and our more inclusive model, increasing the number of sections in several core subjects to maintain lower class size. You'll see that that's a focus at one of the middle schools bases. And certainly, last but not least, additional resources to focus on safety, security, and social well-being of students and staff.
Waiting for the other one. So, up at the high school, Mr. Leclerc has asked us to increase the options for students so that it would increase the opportunity and keep more of our seniors engaged in school. He's looking at increasing the course credits that students have to receive to six. Currently, it's 5.5. He's asking us to do the six credits plus PE. With these additional courses, it would give the students an opportunity to explore more areas and to keep them involved in school longer, along with increasing the rigor.
At the junior high school, all students need to have the opportunity to take art, health, and family and consumer science. And by adding a few more sections, this will give students the opportunity to do that, and also create some flexibility within the scheduling, because there are oftentimes students who take certain, what they call, singletons, may get blocked out of taking these courses, and this will allow some flexibility in that. There's been an increase in the students taking living environment in grade nine. And one of the things that people, if you've been in a science class, in lab settings, you need to make sure that you do not have an overcrowded environment in doing that for safety reasons. So, we're providing the additional staff to make appropriate class sizes for living environment.
Next two slides speak to special education staffing as well as enrollment. We have worked very hard the last two years to have a more inclusive setting for our special needs students and environment. And we're continuing to monitor and fine tune staffing needs here, as well as some staffing needs for some of our special. I think if you take a look at the next slide, it, it shows that although overall enrollment has decreased slightly over the past five years, the number of students with disability has increased. And so, it does make sense that we need to put resources in place for programming for those students.
As Ms. Speech mentioned, our enrollment has declined in some areas, but we do have a bubble at the middle school as far as our enrollment. And with that bubble, we will need to increase the offerings for students so that class sizes are reasonable.
Relative to additional resources for safety and security, we're continuing to work, as I mentioned earlier, on restructuring our entryways at Roxboro Road Middle School and North Syracuse Junior High. Those are the two that we're currently working on. We'll finish the junior high over the spring break, and we'll get Roxboro Road done this summer. We're just waiting for some stated approval on that. We're looking for further training opportunities to address the safety of students and staff, and, and we're, we're trying to, we're hopeful that at the beginning of next year, we'll be able to do a, a training day with, with our staff in connection with that. And we're, we're also working on expanding professional development opportunities to support students' social emotional learning, or social emotional well-being, support our students. We, we've done a bunch of training this year, and I've been fortunate that some of the folks, even in my organization, whether it be our, our bus drivers and attendants, have been able to attend some training to, to make them more sensitive, sensitive, and more skilled at dealing with social emotional issues that our students may be facing. We are, we definitely, and we've been talking about this for years, we're looking at another SRO. We're currently in conversations with the Onondah County Sheriff's Department. We met with the undersheriff and the sergeant in charge of, of the SRO program last week. And we're trying to figure out a way to structure the program so we can get another SRO, SRO in here, at least one more to cover our, our secondary schools fully. And then, we're increasing in our budget the number of school psychologists.
As Don had mentioned, our primary function and primary expense is, is putting people, adults, in front of children. And to that end, we have a peer assistance and review process that utilizes consultant teachers to ensure that those teachers are the most supported and most well-educated and highly functioning teachers that we can possibly give to our kids. To support that program, we continue to invest in our consultant teacher program. We currently have six consultant teachers. We'll be increasing the number to eight, because we have now in our system over 100 probationary teachers that will be in our system. And you think about the fact that seven years ago, when we started this program, we had one consultant teacher with a caseload within 15. And now, we're over 100. That's a number of reasons for that. We've gone to a four-year probationary period, which extends the need by an entire year. We also have been hiring more staff over the last three years. Last year, we had 60 people at new staff orientation. We're scheduled to have 40 at this year's. So, you think in the two-year period, we've got 100 new staff that we've brought in, either replacing retirees, or as part of our new staff that we use to expand things like our special education program. So, there's, there's a lot going on there. So, the, this, this is a very important part of how we support our teaching staff. This slide is here to sort of break down for you, we've seen multiple slides. Most of these things have been previously mentioned, they're a little, bit, sort of a repeat, but just to kind of put together for you the total number of personnel changes that we're looking at this year in various areas, along with 28 retirements of instructional staff, 21 teacher and seven teaching assistant. And you put that together with the proposed additions to the high school and some other areas, you can see that we're looking at close to 40 new staff that will be, that we'll be hiring to replace retirements and, and increase our services to kids.
I show this slide every year to emphasize, again, that North Syracuse spends less per pupil than most districts in New York State and, and most in our BOCs. I took a little different slice at this for the, this year's presentation, and I'm using some data that we get from New York's State Education Department, the ST3 filings, that's our annual report. And I'm only looking at general fund and special aid fund expenditures for this chart. But, because I was curious, I mean, if I, I wanted to break it out to be the most impactful things for students, where do we rank? And we still unfortunately rank at the bottom end of the pack in terms of spending. And people always say to me, well, geez, we should spend more, why don't we spend more? Well, going back to the first slide, the first couple of slides, if we had more foundation aid, we'd spend more money. It's as simple as that. And, but I just wanted you to, to see again where we stood relative to other districts in our BOCs. I attribute this difference purely to foundation aid. You know, sure, are there other districts that are charging more to their taxpayers for their, their tax rate? Yes. But $10 million, can you imagine what that would do to our students, our spending? I mean, it would, it would move us up the list, you know, several notches, that's for sure. So, I really do think that is our single biggest financial issue right now.
I may, back, just back to Paul's line, but on that chart of the tax rates.
Can I go back to it?
No, but some of the ones with lower rates than we have are in that first column, because they've got much more property wealth than we do. So, the tax rate is lower, their tax levy's much higher, and they can spend more. So, those two graphs don't correlate. Because unless we were all tax levy driven with the same type of base, it would be. But some, again, some of, some of the lowest tax rates in this state are Westchester and Dow, because they've got so much property value. So, the rate is lower.
So, I always tell people-
So, you can't, you can't think that the lower rate's spending less, the lower rate may be spending more.
I always tell people, I live out in the country, and my kids go to Marcellus School District. And the tax rate in Marcellus is much higher than the tax rate in Skinny Atlas. And so, to summary, the taxes are higher in Marcellus than they are in Skinny Atlas. Why is that? That doesn't make any sense. Well, the reason it is, is because the properties are worth so much more in Skinny Atlas that they can, and they're comparable school districts, they're trying to basically do the same thing, that they have to, they can charge less rate per thousand and get a greater levy than the Marcellus School District can, charging a higher rate per thousand, because it's on, on lower values in Marcellus.
There was a district in Oswego County that had two nuclear plants. It was about $6,000 a thousand, and the rest of us were 16 or 20. Now, they got neither. But they were spending much more than we were at $6,000 a thousand. So, it depends on what you've got to tax.
That's kind of what, that's kind of what Mike was-
Yeah, it's, there's no correlation. Because, again, the, the tax rate is a function of the property wealth in the district, not the expenditure per pupil. So, you can have a very low tax rate and be spending 20, $25,000 per kid, because you've got, like, a nuclear plant in your district. And all of a sudden, you can get, at $6,000 a thousand, get millions of dollars, while we at $6,000 a thousand, who closed the doors.
But don't, don't forget that, that all of our revenues come from either the tax levy or state aid. So, the chart with the tax rates was kind of about the blue. The, the state aid conversation that we're having about foundation aid is all the green. And what we're arguing is that that, this number should be a lot higher due to foundation aid. aid, and if it was, we wouldn't do anything with the money other than spend it on kids. You know, once you get your fund balance to 4% or so, whatever the state requirement is, you, at that point, you, all that money goes to kids. So I think, again, our biggest problem is this foundation aid issue, and it's very frustrating because, you know, there's no end in sight to that gap being closed.
Don?
Yeah.
Is there a stipulation on how state aid is spent? You know, how sometimes they dictate how you can spend...
Well, sure, I mean, some aids are very specific to transportation aid, for example, or building aid, for, you know, another example, or excess cost aid...
So transportation aid is all included in that state aid?
It's all included in that, in those aids, yep. So let's talk about our buses, and just real quick, and I'll wrap this up, I've taken up a lot of your time, I'm sorry for rambling here, but, so every year, we've been doing a bus replacement, we've replaced 10 65-passenger buses and two special needs buses. This year, we're going to go with 12 and two special needs buses, and let me explain that to you. I want to address two questions that probably are, that I've had asked to me over the years. People often say, "Well, geez, I mean, isn't our enrollment going down?" Yes, but the physical geography we have to cover to pick up all those kids isn't going down, the district's not shrinking, more and more developments are coming online, and we haven't, our enrollment hasn't plummeted, so, you know, hey, if we could, if every kid was willing to have a two-hour commute, we might be able to do with a few less buses, but the reality of it is, we're triple-trip our kids, we've got to make sure we can get our kids to school on time. We had another little, so that's one factor as to why we continue to buy the same amount of buses. We're buying two more 65-passenger diesel buses this year, because frankly, we had a model year that we had a lot of mechanical problems with, and those buses are off warranty now, and we had to make a strategic decision to keep repairing and maintaining those buses at a very high cost, or sell them and get rid of them. And so we actually are able to sell those buses for approximately the cost of buying two more buses. And so we're going to increase our fleet, we're going to take a little bit of a blip in terms of our average age of the fleet, but we're spending a little less than we spent last year on vehicles, and we're pretty confident this is the right move, it'll be the best economic move for the district. And the total tax impact after transportation aid is $1.82 per year for a $100,000 house before STAR, and we are buying a new delivery truck in there as well, and you've noticed the last several years, we've tried to pick up another vehicle in addition to our fleet, and we've been doing that, whether it be Suburbans or bucket loaders and things like that. Projected fund balance, so let me talk a little bit about that. Last time I was here, we had a TBD in our variance of expenditures. We're getting close enough to the end of the year, and as you can imagine, there's just, no, I'm not overestimating this, there's thousands of lines in our budget when you think about all the schools and all their different expenditures, and we've gone through those lines pretty thoroughly, and we're reasonably confident at this point that when the year comes to an end on our, you know, roughly $160 million budget, that will be $1.5 million underspent. We're not as confident about our revenues, we think our revenues will come in at or about plan, but that gives us, including our appropriation for next year of 2.7 million, that'll give us a fund balance of about 3.1 million on the proposed budget of 163.1, it's a fund balance of about 3.15%. And so we wanted to share that with you. No change in reserves, the same reserve slide I've shown, these are our projected reserves coming down to the end of the year. And just kind of quick summary, the governor's budget, as usual, it increases our general aid, but it's only 1.4% increase, it's less than adequate, and we're hoping we're going to get more of this, hopefully by the end of the week, we'll hear about that. We've talked about our foundation aid, we have a deficit of $636,000 we hope to substantially close with the final budget and some last-minute tuning of expenses. Our preliminary tax levy, which at this point really is our final tax levy, nothing should change between now and the end of next, end of the week, is 2.94% increase, and our budget includes revenues of 162.4 million, it's about a 2.39% increase in revenues, where our revenues are a little higher, I'm sorry, expenditures are a little higher, a 2.79% increase, we're still reviewing. And one thing we are considering is, if we get a decent increase in state aid, what we might end up doing is appropriating a little more fund balance to close that gap, and we'll keep you guys posted, well, we'll report to you next Monday on how we're doing. And that brings us to April 2nd, next Monday, where we hope that you folks will adopt the proposed budget, and we'll be off to the races. We've already started scheduling our community meetings, roughly 30 community meetings to present the budget to the community, and as you know, our budget vote is on May 15th, 6:00 to 8:00, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at both CCROL and here at the district office. We've got a great registration process that Connie Gibson manages, and anybody that makes any initiatives to get out and get registered, we get them set up so that they can vote. We'll do our special registration meeting on Tuesday, May 1st, two weeks before the actual budget vote and election. And that's it. Any questions or comments? Thank you for listening to that long presentation.
Just a quick one, I mean, I'm glad to see we're moving forward in our, towards our goals. Last time we were here, we had a 1.1. Generally, where we, what do we do to get down to 6.1?
Yeah, that's a great question. So a couple of things, is that, that's your question, kind of how do we close the gap?
Yeah, because I see all those other items in there.
Yeah, so, well, yes, so the budgeting is an estimation process?
No.
Budgeting is an estimation process, and so we went through with all of our directors, and whether it be Matt Conti or John Ward, and, you know, transportation and buildings and grounds, or even our departmental directors and our principals, and we'd say, "Are you sure you need that expenditure? Let's do some math on that." And everywhere we could, we, you know, we're not trying to cut things too tight, but we have these secondary conversations, and they come back and they go, "You know what? I think I could spend a little bit less here and a little bit less here," and we took a look at things like our fuel expenditures. You know, for years, we've talked about fuel prices coming up, and they have, but they've never really come back up to the levels that we had in the budget, so we're able to trim that a little bit. Energy costs, even with our usage being up with the cold weather we've had recently, we're pretty optimistic, we've got some early indications on how those bids are coming in on our energy. So it's hundreds of light items that we've kind of combed through, and I know cutting it by half a million sounds like a lot, but we've got a lot of light items to work with, and we were able to do some fine tuning. I don't think anybody felt like we squeezed them for big money, it was just lots of little adjustments.
And I just want to add too, as Mr. Keegan said, there's still a few areas where we're going to take a closer look this week, and the Board Budget Subcommittee, I believe, is meeting, I want to say, it must be Thursday, because we don't have school on Friday, for one last look, and we're hopeful also for additional state aid, so post through that process, and next week, we'll hopefully...
Thank you. Thank you both, thank you all. Appreciate it. 4A, Board Committee Reports. No, pardon me, pardon me, comments from the audience? I have none, so now we move to 4. Item 4A, Board Committee Reports. Mary, policy?
Yep, we had a policy committee meeting on March 8th. We reviewed numerous policies, 11 are on tonight's agenda, 3 are amend and re-adopt, 8 is to re-adopt without change, and we'll be meeting again on Tuesday, April 10th.
Thank you. Legislative, Paul?
The Legislative Committee met on March 21st last week, we discussed the Get Out the Vote movement, and there will be an effort to get, to see that the school budget is appropriately advertised on the upcoming events that we have here forward. We had an interesting discussion on, thanks to Mary, on the, looking at the possibility of lobbying at the county level with the tax, sales tax, revenue sharing agreement coming up on his tenure, so we don't know where that's going to go, but that's something we're going to explore as we go forward.
Thank you. Anybody else? Board of Ed? Superintendent's comments?
So just a couple of things, I don't believe we've met since the play, the musical Oklahoma took place at the high school, it was phenomenal. I know every time I go to one of the musicals, I say it was the best yet, I think this was the best yet. They keep raising the bar, it was just an unbelievable evening of entertainment, so congratulations to them. I'm also pleased to announce that the CNS Art Department has four works of art that were awarded national silver or national gold medals for the Scholastic Art Competition. We have Ripley Hoffman, grade 12, received a national gold medal for the drawing Double Portrait, and a national silver medal for the painting called Bird. Alexis Pike, grade 12, received a national gold medal for her photograph, Don't Touch Those. Maxine Cooper, grade 10, national silver medal for printmaking piece called Riot. And these three talented students' work will be recognized at the National Scholastic Art Awards Ceremony on June 7th at Carnegie Hall in New York City, so this is big stuff. And also CNS DECA competed in state competition held on March 7th through 9th in Rochester. They had a record 2,500-plus business students from across the street compete in a three-day conference, and we sent seven business students to the competition and took home 10 top medals, three event finalists, and CNS Ryan, Senior, Ryan Ingersson won second place in the state in his event marketing communication series. So I'm just going to read some names here, Ryan Ingersson, Emily Lacastro, Nicole Perrigo, Hayden Leonard, Taylor Hayman. They were top 10 medalists, event finalists, Maria Marullo, Shaiho Shwani, Benjamin Stevenson, and overall state winners, Ryan Ingersson. And we have New York DECA Honor Society inductees, Taron Field, Casey Koenig, if I said that right, Chris Kawlowski, and Julia Towers, so congratulations.
Well done. Thank you, yes, yes.
Will we have the opportunity to see the art awards?
I have to touch base with them again, because when Mrs. Cook put out something about this, I know she asked if there were like photographs of their awards, and there's...
Yeah, I had the pleasure to attend the Wall of Distinction ceremony up at CNS High School a couple of weeks ago. It was delayed for a week because of the weather, and we almost had to cancel it again because of the weather, but it's always good to see an event like that. We had former students get recognized this year, current staff, just a really overall great event, shows what our school district can do to make the community a better place, and it's great to see these people give back to the community, and I'm glad that we all get to recognize them, so thank you, Dan, for all your work with that.
Our Teacher of the Year?
Yeah, Amy Heisick was on there, yeah.
Thank you. 5, Routine Action Items. 5A, Consideration of Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Board of Education in March 5. B, Consideration of the Classification and School Placement of Disabled Students Certified by the District Committee on Special Education. C, Consideration of Classification and Placement of Preschool Disabled Students Certified by the District Committee on Preschool Special Education. D, Consideration of Classification and Placement of Students in Home Instruction Programs as Recommended by the Home Instruction Review Committee. And E, Acknowledgement of Business Office Reports for January 18, 2018. I will entertain a motion to approve 5A, B, C, D, and E as a group. Mr. Leon, Ms. McDonald, all in favor. Discussion, Item 6A, Board of Education Vacancy. Ms. Owens has resigned her position as a Board of Education member effective immediately, so we have three options according to Larry to fill it. We can either appoint someone, we can hold a special election, or we can wait for the May 15th election, and the person who finishes fourth in the balloting for Board of Ed will fill the one-year term remaining for her. I frankly don't see any option at this point, given that it's March 26th. So we let it go to the May election, which the legal notice later is going to say anyway, so we'll do that, because otherwise, there's no time to do anything there. Also, Jackie sat on the Onondaga-Madison School Board Association Board of Directors. I talked to Charlie Borgagnoni the other day, so that seat is open, and he asked me to see if there's any interest here from anybody who would want to take that seat on that board. I believe they meet about four times a year at the Onondaga-Madison piece. He's got four of these different boards within Central New York. He also wants me to call him tomorrow morning, so he gave us a lot of time to figure this out. I talked to him on Friday. So is there anybody that's interested in filling that remainder of that term for Jackie? I believe that would end, that would end this year, July, I think, and then we have to do it again next year? I'm not sure. Is there anybody that's interested? Mary, wonderful, thank you. We'll add the line to your plaque, when you retire from the Board of Ed, we'll add one more line to the plaque. I'll get details for you, and I will have Charlie hook up with you and see what happens. Well, thank you, thank you so much. All right. Discussion Action Items. 7A, Revised Notice of Public Hearing and Election, which has come about because of the resignation of Jackie, which causes the Board of Ed details to change. That is not a roll call, is it Connie? Okay, so I'll just put that in with the rest of the groups then. No, I take that back, this one's going to be separate. I will entertain a motion to approve the Revised Notice of Public Hearing and Election. Mr. Fufalia, Mr. Harrington, all in favor, and one abstention, Connie, with that potential conflict I have with the bus purchase. B, Recommendation to Create a 1.0 FD Teaching Assistant at Gillette Road Middle School. C, Authorization of Impartial Hearing Settlement Agreement. D, Ratification of the Teamsters Local Number 317 Contract. And E, Surplus of Non-Marketable and Marketable Equipment. I'll take, entertain a motion for 7, B, C, D, and E as a group. Mr. Leon, Ms. McDonald, all in favor. Gifts, I want to do separately. North Star Baseball Boosters has donated to the district a check of $1,238 for the boys' baseball program to put just a betting cage net. And the real reason I want this separately, 4D Productions has presented to the North Syracuse Central School District a check in the amount of $20,375.16 to be used toward the acquisition of LED fixtures for the North Syracuse Junior High School Auditorium. So that is a significant thing, and I know Mike wants to make the motion to approve this. Anybody a second on this, Ms. McDonald? Anything else? All in favor? Oh, Annette wants to make the comment, I'm sorry.
I just want to recognize, you know, 4D is really a student-led group that does a remarkable amount of things here, and I would just want to recognize Taylor, who's out in the audience, one of our students, my understudy, all of the research to put the figures together on what it would take to improve this lighting.
Who is Taylor? Oh, there we are, stand up, Taylor.
So I just want, we want to recognize you.
Okay, there we go. Wow, thank you, well done, Taylor, thank you. Thank you, Annette. 7G, Policy 2450, Dissemination of School Board Policies. 4750 Elementary School K6 Promotion. 5421.2 Concussion Management. 1920 Sign Language Interpreter for Deaf Parents. 2410 Policy Development. 2521 Board Member attendance at seminars, conferences, and school-related activities. 4750.2 Elementary K6 Non-sequential Grade Advancement. 5210 Student Activities. 524, pardon me, 5421 Communicable Diseases. 5440 Drug and Alcohol Policy. And 5601.1 Stocking of Liquid Albuterol. Mary, would you like to make the motion to approve all of those as a group? Second, Mr. Harrington, all in favor? Okay. Retirements. Oh, there we go. Mary Stone, Bus Driver, retires with 26 and a half years of service. Lawrence Zacharek, Electronic Equipment Technician, requires, retires with 15 years of service. Robert Adley, Special Education Teacher, 19 years of service. Nancy Congdon, Music Teacher, 19 years of service. And Joyce Warner, Elementary Teacher, retires with 26 and a half years of service. So we wish them all a long health, long and healthy and happy retirement, and thank them for their service. Personnel Report, A, Instructional, B, Support, C, Administrative. Any need for any discussion? Personnel Report. A, Instructional. B, Support. C, Administrative. Any need for any discussions? Motion to approve as a group? Mike? Second, Mike Maurizio moved. Mike Leon, second. All in favor. Motion for Executive Session. Motion to move into Executive Session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the North Syracuse Education Association to review five legal matters relative to potential litigation, and to review the employment history of three individuals with no action to follow. Motion for Executive Session, Mr. Harrington, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor. 810, we'll ask the seniors to come forward with your sheets, and we'll sign those for you.